It's gonna be mayor and then in sequential order, one, two, three, four. So I mean, your dad gets to sit here.
Listen to everybody.
Listen to everybody else.
The questions are like already determined, right?
Yeah, so, right, so, so I think there's generic questions everybody's gonna get. And then there's award-specific questions, I think that were created by submissions from residents online. And it's a like, I may get three or four award-specific questions. If your dad may have like two of the same ones, but two different ones. Who knows?
See how it goes. Good luck.
Thanks. Hello? 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 So I'm trying.
I'm not working so good.
I feel like if you give me the word, I'm worried.
Can everybody hear me okay? No? What about now?
So you're in the back.
Welcome to our, our candidate forum tonight. I'm Dan Starnes from the Homewood Star. Very appreciative of everybody who has shown up and engaged in this election. You know, in the last municipal election in Homewood, I think we had about 5,000 voters, literally 5,000 people voted. About 27,000 population. And so, you know, we're, we're putting this on to increase engagement and awareness in our community. And I really appreciate everybody who's a part of it. This is the fourth time we've put this forum on, part of the league. But Jonathan Harbison is back here, moderator, and kind enough to do this. Ford Thompson, Ashley Burkley is out of the logistics. She helped us start the page, I went to Ashley and do tell her the levels. So I had to send these papers, thank you. I don't really know what I'm doing and I don't have the reporters and I don't have the resources. But let's do it and hang on till 2025, you know, and so on. We appreciate that and really appreciate the candidates that are running. So, you know, you think about it, there's 12 people willing to step up and lead and sit their name on the ballot and take heat and have Rockstar out and all kinds of things. And I appreciate that, I admire that. So thank you all for doing that and for being here tonight. With that, I'm gonna go off the stage, turn it over to our moderator, Jonathan Harbison. And thanks again for coming.
Welcome, Dan. Can y'all hear me on this part?
Okay.
So I think you've already learned candidates, you're gonna wanna eat that mic right, make sure we all get those answers. I'll be the chief Rockcorporate tonight, according to Dan. Obviously, I ask you the questions just for disclosure purposes. A longtime Homewood teacher spouse, my wife Christmas teaches at Edgewood. Actually, I'm kindergarten person, now is the second. I've got a son at Homewood High School, Homewood Middle School, and at Edgewood. So definitely invested in this community as a lot of you guys are. So it's my honor to be back with you. I've been here a long time, remember, it's been a few years to be in an Italian restaurant. So I've been around for a little while. And look forward to taking on candidates tonight. Thank you all for being here. With that, I'll explain a little bit about our format. I'm gonna start with our two mayoral candidates. And if you all would like to make your way to the stage, please do. Choose a chair of your choosing. We won't put anything related to which side of the board you decide to sit on. So our format tonight, we'll spend about 30 minutes with our two candidates for mayor. I'll give each of them a chance to do a two-minute opening statement. And then they'll have a minute to give a closing statement at the end of our 30 minutes together. I'll ask a series of questions. Each will have two minutes to respond. And Ashley will be handling the timing, so she'll hold up that nice red sign. And you're in 10 seconds towards the end of your answer, that way you can kinda have a sense of where we are time-wise. At two minutes, I'll always respectfully as I can catch you off, so you can keep this moving. I'll allow everybody to have a same amount of equal time. We'll go over the rules for our work candidates, and we'll get to that in about a half hour or so. With that, with further ado, we'll just do this alphabetically. Jennifer Andrews, if you'd like to go first for the two-minute opening statement.
Here we go, okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Jennifer Andrews, and in the last nine years, I've had the honor of serving on the Homewood City Council, representing Ward Five. My husband moved me to Homewood 23 years ago, our anniversary was two days ago. We raised our two wonderful sons here. They went all the way through the school system from pre-K at Hall Kent, all the way to middle school, Chayska Hava Middle School to high school. We love Homewood, and I know that we do too. And I'm here to tell you tonight, Homewood is thriving. Our schools are number one in the state again. We are the number one place to live in Jefferson County, according to niche.com. Our parks are the envy of our neighboring municipalities. Our library is state-ranked and nationally recognized. Crime is at record lows, thanks to our amazing Homewood Police Department. Our Homewood Fire Department has a rare Class One ranking. We have one of the most walkable communities in Alabama. We have the Shays Creek Greenway, which is now at four miles long into West Homewood, and that welcomes 135,000 users annually to Homewood. We are fiscally sound. No matter what else you hear, I want you to hear that. We are financially healthy. Our bond ratings are at AA+ for S&amp;P and AA2 for Moody's. We have enough debt services fund. We have a surplus enough in our debt services fund to create a five, a 10, and a 15-year capital improvement plan. Simply put, people want to move here, they want to open their businesses here, they want to shop, eat, and recreate here. And none of this happened by accident. This success takes a lot of hard work by a lot of people, including city staff, department heads, city councilors, and mayors. I have been a part of this team for the last nine years, working hard for you, communicating regularly with my ward directly from me, emails several times a month, and bringing a city manager to Homewood.
And that's our time, Ms. Andrews, thank you. That's two minutes.
August 26.
Well, Ms. Andrews, let it for two minutes to you for the opening statement.
Okay. I'm Robin Wyper. I'm a retired teacher, principal, former Alabama State Teacher of the Year. I've been a software CEO, COO, and I've also done catastrophic claims for pilot insurance. I have lived in Homewood for 33 years. And like everybody in this room, I love Homewood. And I know all about Homewood like you do. But we've got some problems. We're $159 million in debt. That bothers me. That's $6,600 for every man, woman, and child. That's not okay. Last January, the state of Alabama did an audit. And our city council, they're guilty. They're guilty of not managing the finances. Now, I'm a former administrator, I know how city finances should work. I know how government finances should work. And we've got to get that in place. And finally, the third thing that I wanna mention to you, we need different processes. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of hearing about things right before they happen. Whether it's Sanford project, the new thing they just threw on us down here at Edgewood. Folks, it's called strategic planning. I know about strategic planning, I can bring that to the table. And hardest thing about tonight, I talk slow, and I've been practicing talking fast, so y'all forgive me a little.
And that's our time.
Skip over myself.
All right, we'll move to the question portion of the evening, Ms. Andrews. We'll start with you, and we'll try and rotate, so everybody has a chance to respond first to a couple of questions. And Ms. Lyter, we're just looking ahead, will allow you the honor of giving your closing statement first at the conclusion. This first question, the sinners are on an issue both of you actually touched on in your opening statements. Since the last time Homewood voters went to the polls, the city's former CEO, or has pleaded guilty to a best-aid almost a million dollars in less than a year, a fact became to light as the state investigated how city employees and leaders were using city-issued credit cards. That investigation also found several ways in which there were insufficient oversights of taxpayer money and how it was spent. So how can voters, who vote at the polls in a couple of weeks, be assured that you will be a good steward of their money? Ms. Andrews, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. I wanna mention, it is a travesty that a, an employee at the city of Homewood with over a decade of experience and, and with time at the county before that stole from our city, stole from our taxpayers, lied to our council, lied to our mayor, and lied to our auditors. That is an absolute travesty. He is in federal prison now, so we are, we were already in the process of strengthening our internal systems. We were already overhauling our credit card policy when that happened the last few months of his appointment. Since that time, we have a new finance director, we have hired a principal CPA, we have outsourced payroll, we have pooled our cash per the audit suggestions. But most importantly, we have a city manager. That is the most important thing that's happened since our last election. We have someone full-time at City Hall. I can't, as a person who's been here for nine years, I cannot explain to you the difference of having separate, 12 separate silos in the city, and now having full-time professional management of somebody in City Hall overseeing that department. So it is not ever gonna happen again, I'll tell you right now. Again, I wanna touch on debt, $159 million, 59 million debt is the school system, so I wanna let everybody know where those numbers are coming from. But I wanna give you a statistic. A healthy city looks to have 90 days of reserve funds, 90 days. For Homewood, that's $134,000 a day. A great goal is 120 days, that's amazing. We have 376 days in reserve, Homewood does. We have enough surplus in our debt fund, our debt services fund, that we are embarking on a 15-year capital plan. We are healthy, you all. Do not, do not accept the fear, do not accept that they are not facts. We are healthy.
And Ms. Lyter, the same question to you again about the accountability of taxpayer dollars and how they're spent. And two minutes to you now.
Okay. I want to address the city manager part of it. I'm glad we have a city manager. I'm glad we're no longer in a position where you call a city council member if you wanna stop sign. But that city manager is only going to be as good as the people who understand how those finances are supposed to work. I understand how government finances are supposed to work. I understand them from being in a school. You have to have, it sounds simple, a payment trail. And it doesn't matter if you buy a car, a tire, or a box of pens. It doesn't matter. If you buy a box of pens, you know what account it came out of, who bought it, who approved it. And that all sounds cumbersome, but it's really not. That's how school systems in Alabama work. And people talk about school systems, not ours, ours is number one. But when they take over school systems in Alabama, do you know how they do it? Finances. It's because it works systematically. So when I get in there, that is the thing that I wanna work on with the city manager. I wanna make sure that the other council members that are business people, they'll have me there, and I know how those finances are supposed to look and flow.
Ms. Lyter, thank you very much. Ms. Andrews, actually, if you'd like, Ms. Lyter, you respond first to that question, we'll kinda go around.
Sorry.
Sorry, I don't clear about that. Ms. Lyter, next question. You know, I've always told us, you know, the Homewood Star, we care very much about candidates developing. There've been several controversies in the last couple of months about the Creekside District project, the Sanford, the Pocket Park at State House idea, what to do with the Old Jail property. I wanted to hear you speak specifically to those two projects, and here stands on each.
The Creekside.
Creekside and the Old Jail location. And then, if you know my overall, is the general philosophy you would have about development or redevelopment in this area?
Well, I'm not starting much anymore.
Okay, two minutes to you for all that work.
Here, okay. Here's my thing. The Sanford project, people looked at me and they said, "What do you think?" And I said, "Well, I stopped thinking when I found out it was about reading that news and name." When I spoke first, I'm telling you, that's not how we need to do business in Homewood. If there is any kind of major project that is going to affect you, your small business, your livelihood, you need to know about it when we get there. Not at the 11th hour. That, that's just not how we need to do business in Homewood. And the other project was the jail, same thing. When did we find out about it? And I'm pretty blunt, we'll go to the website, go to the minutes. Most people in Homewood, they come home from work, they cook dinner, they wanna spend time with their kids, they may go to the ball field, and they elect people to watch out for them. So again, my message is, if it's gonna affect you, your business, you and your neighborhood, we need a process in place that will make sure that you know about it. Not, not at the 11th hour, but in the beginning. No behind closed-door deals.
Ms. Lyter, thank you. Ms. Andrews, the same question to you. You could speak specifically to Creekside, the jail property, and then your overall development philosophy.
Respectfully, it was not at the city for three and a half years. I, I've been on the Planning Commission for the last five years, and I've been the chair of the Planning and Development Committee. And I found out about Creekside the last week of February, the week before it came to the city officially at the Planning Commission meeting. So respectfully, that is not true. I will say that I have a great communication relationship with Ward Five. I have a newsletter that I put out very regularly, and Ward Five residents are informed, and that is something that I will bring to the mayor's office. But about both of those specific developments, we love Sanford, Sanford, we need Sanford to be successful, and we understand that Sanford is an important part of Homewood. We have 6,100 students who shop at Target and go to Taco Mama. Those people need a place, we understand. Everyone that I heard from, and they all had wonderful, very well-thought-out emails that they sent to the city, to us, to me personally, they all understood that Sanford is looking to expand, that's their property, they own that property, they have a right to go through that property, that process. That's how property owners go through a process of developing. They come to the city, they go through the process. There are public hearings. So as far as Sanford goes, as far as Creekside goes, I will say that I think that process worked. There were public meetings, the public spoke, we heard you, and the project did not go forward. So moving forward, what I would tell Sanford is, make sure you engage the public. Often, as mayor, I will communicate very regularly, as far as when those meetings are, I will attend those meetings with you. I would also tell Sanford and the developers to listen when people give you feedback and actually respond and change part of the, of the project that people don't, you know, weren't supporting. As far as the jail property goes, the big highlight of that project for me was actually the park. That was two-thirds of the property that the city would maintain ownership of. So I would say that in 2017, that room above us was completely filled with the Homewood Green Space Initiative, and I've never, that, that was one of the busiest I've ever seen that room up there, filled with people who were looking for green space downtown, and that was my part, that, that was my, that's why I really love that project.
Thank you, that's our time. If you'll stay, Ms. Andrews, we'll allow you to answer the next question first. It touches on schools, no state, but much of Homewood's explosive growth has come from young families moving here for the community. And at the heart of it, as we both mentioned, the state's number-one-weighting school system, but that will only bias the state one thing, which is good and report. How would you actively, don't look at that, how would you actively work to support the school system in the next four years? What would you look for in potentially new school board members? Would you support finding a new funding mechanism of some kind for the school system? Anything you're gonna touch on there, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I have, obviously, the schools mean everything to this community, they do to my family, and I know they do to yours as well. I have an excellent relationship with Dr. Heffner. I have been endorsed by former Homewood City School Superintendent Dr. Bill Cleveland. And everyone that is sitting on that school board, I've either interviewed and appointed. So I'm very close with, you know, I, I feel like we have an amazing school board, and I have been a part of appointing everyone that is sitting on that school board right now. I served in the PTO, I was the PTO president at Shayska Hava Elementary, and I was even a substitute teacher at the high school during COVID. So I have a great relationship with Dr. Heffner, and I look very much forward to moving forward and helping them and supporting them. I know we have some infrastructure issues coming up. You know, I've actually was part of some of the committees that we had, the last go-around with the expansions that we did in the school system, so I look forward to being at their service as well and supporting them. Dr. Heffner gave me a great quote, he said, "It's one thing to be number one, but it is entirely different to repeat." So I'm looking for a repeat.
Ms. Andrews, thank you very much, Ms. Lyter. Two minutes to you, if you'd like to talk about the school system, what you look for in the school board member, how you support it, and how you perhaps would find new funding mechanisms.
Okay. And just for the record, I got my doctorate at Sanford. I got a email from the president of Sanford University. That project was in the making for a very long time.
Not the city.
Okay. Okay, but we need a communication system. There need to be policies, communications, processes, and we don't have them. Okay, as far as schools, I'm a former State Teacher of the Year. I was chair of a big project in Alabama, and it said, "Every child is entitled to a caring, capable, and qualified teacher." One thing that we always need to do, yeah, we're number one, but we need to make sure that we're able to recruit and retain the best teachers in the state. And occasionally, that may mean that the city needs to pitch in and pay our teachers more. Okay? We wanna keep a good school system, that's part of it. That's a big part of it. We need to sit down and we need to communicate with teachers, administrators, what do you need in your schools? I'd like to see foreign language in K3. That's the primary time to learn it. Okay? That, foreign languages are learned best kindergarten through third grade. Wouldn't it be something if Homewood had that and no one else did? Anyway, I feel like I'm the primary person that could communicate with the school system. I'm a 33-and-a-half-year veteran, principal, assistant principal, teacher, but I taught for 25 years before I went into administration, so I know those needs.
And if you could stay right there, we'll allow you to answer this next question first. Multiple responders in the Homewood Star said, "Hey, tell us what's on your mind." A lot of people said some combination of scooters, e-bikes, two dumb golf carts, I think your chuckles are familiar, right? Are they welcome on our neighborhood's side streets? Are they welcome on the main thoroughfares? We've seen injuries, we've seen traffic hassles, we've seen safety concerns, we've seen some, some accidents. What would you specifically do or advocate to make the streets safer for both drivers and for kids who may wanna use these to get around? Can they coexist? Two minutes to you on that issue.
Okay. I'm, if you hadn't noticed, I'm real serious about the person. And I've been doing a lot of reading, research on scooters, and I'm gonna be the Debbie Downer here. I think we need to ban them. The age for scooters, don't tell your kids I said that, is age 16. There is a mother in Pennsylvania right now that is trying to get national legislation to ban them. Her child was killed, her 12-year-old middle-school child was killed, killed when she fell off the scooter coming home from school. 56,000 children were injured last year. It was only 715 in 2017, so you see how it's increased. And I'm gonna tell you this, when I was a very young teacher, I had a child that run over and killed, and he didn't have on a helmet. He was on a bike. But I was at the hospital when he passed away. And I don't, y'all excuse me, this was a long time ago, but I don't wanna ever see a parent in Homewood go through what I saw those parents go through. So, you know, I used to tell my parents when I was principal, I'd say, "Tell, tell your kids I'm the bad guy." Right now, I think they, until we get our roads straightened out, we don't even need to consider that. They need to be banned. And I know a bunch of y'all just bought them for Christmas, I'm sorry. Okay, but you also find out with me, I really do shoot straight. And I feel like decisions in the city are your decisions, but when they come to safety, we need to make them hard and fast.
Ms. Lyter, thank you for your time.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had rotator cuff surgery, and I'm a little pain right now, I'm sorry.
Ms. Andrews, if you'd like to have two minutes to respond to your question, your view on scooters, e-bikes, golf carts, traffic, how do they work?
Well, a lot of that is managed with state statutes. I mean, we have, you know, there's, there's a state law for golf carts, you know, low-speed vehicles, and, and also scooters, actually. And so, you know, a lot of it also, I would say, needs to be on the parents, as far as letting the kids, you know, just, I, I don't think we should ban scooters, but I do think that the parents need to work with their kids, so they understand the safety, the safety issues in the neighborhoods. And then, you know, the library just did an event a couple of weeks ago where they had an education seminar for the kids, and I think that we can maybe work with the school system and do that. I don't think we should ban them, I think that we should teach them how to use them safely. I will mention, as we're talking about getting around and alternative modes of transportation, we have spent the last year doing an audit on our sidewalk system, and I know we've got a really hilly, a lot of hills and a lot of sort of windy roads that we have left to put sidewalks on, but that's coming. And so those are other ways for people to get around. But I do think education, you know, I'd also like to see friendly patrols, you know. That's one thing I've talked to Chief Ross about, is having, you know, some more patrol cars out and about, just sort of friendly, and maybe, you know, letting kids know how to use their scooters. But I don't think we should ban them, but I do think we do need to work with them to use them in a safer manner.
Ms. Andrews, thank you. We'll let you begin to answer to our final question, and Ms. Lyter will finish the view, and then I'll allow you to give your closing statement. I wanted to go back to the topic of development, again, we mentioned those two specific projects, but one thing we heard from several people as well is that there's a feeling that it has been developed in a, you might call an uneven fashion. There were certain properties that have lay either dormant, vacant, or underused perhaps for years. Brookwood Village, of course, comes to mind, that's one that was, was mentioned several times. A couple of those hotels over by these, Oxmoor 65 interchange, what was others, for 17 years, right? What would, lots of cities use, and I've been before with these, have thought of, and say, "There may be something about Brookwood Village." There may be something about these. So can you realistically say in the next four years, we would see active movement and redevelopment? It's similar to those biggest but most underused properties. Two minutes to you now.
So Brookwood is my neighborhood, that's where I live. I'm on that property every day, I buy coffee there, I buy groceries there. I'm very excited that we have Andrews Sports Medicine coming, that is a huge coup for Homewood. That is a world-class sports clinic that is coming to Homewood, that is a big deal. As you know, with Brookwood, the complexity of the property is an issue, because we have some of that property is in Mountain Brook, and some of it is in unincorporated Jefferson County. We passed a, a resolution last December, and Mountain Brook did as well, where we are working together. I have excellent relationships with this leadership in Mountain Brook and with the leadership at the county. I'm very close with the county commission's office, and this is gonna take a team effort from all of us to bring forward a regional product that we can all be proud of. And it's something that is not going to impact our school systems or Mountain Brook's school systems. This project is going to impact us, benefit us the same, that's what our resolutions say, and I plan to be a part of that, absolutely. We've already had, you know, they've, they've come to us a few times. We've already had, you know, they've come to us a few times. I'm on the planning commission, like I said, and I was on the planning commission that approved Andrews, and I'm very excited about that. I will mention some of the hotels in West Homewood. Obviously, one of the really big success stories is the Econo Lodge going away, and I'm really proud of the council and what we did with that. We had a very crime-ridden hotel that was brought down to the ground, and if you have been to El Vario or Paramount lately and been able to get a table there, you see how successful it is. And then they built a smaller housing unit, I think it's 40, I think it's 45 maybe, town homes. So not super impactful, but the neighborhood came out and supported that project, and it has been a raging success. So I would like to see more projects like that, and it's just making sure that the community's involved, and they hear from us, and they are part of the process. I tell every developer, like I said, I've been on the planning and development committee for nine years. I've been chair for five, and I've been on the planning commission, but I tell every developer who comes to Homewood, "You have to have the approval of the public. You have to. We cannot vote without their approval." So they will absolutely be there for that.
Ms. Andrews, thank you. Ms. Lighter, two minutes. Would you like to talk about Brookwood Village or the other, perhaps, three used buildings?
Okay. Brookwood. In fact, my last doctor's appointment, my doctor told me, he said, "Yeah, we're moving in there." And I'd heard it, we've all heard that, and I think that's a great thing. The problem is, he said by the time they finish, they would not agree to move in there and renovate until they were able to do something with the dust and the, you builders, help me, you know, that is created when they start renovating the rest of Brookwood. So my question is, who's going to pay for that? Who's going to go in there? But here's how I am. It's not my vision for Homewood, it's your vision. It's what do you want to see at Brookwood Mall? Now, I'm excited about Andrews going in there, but any building, any development, any area in Homewood, it's your plan, not mine. You know, I always say this, and it sounds silly, when somebody gets elected to office, they don't get hit with the smart stick and know everything about everything. If you don't communicate with the people that you're supposed to represent on a regular basis, then you're missing out.
Ms. Lighter, thank you. Now, we begin our closing statements. You'll have the honor to go first, and one, sorry, one minute for your closing statement.
Okay. I just have a couple of simple questions. Admitted or not, are you tired of wasteful spending? No input until it's too, almost too late? An endless, unaccountable debt? Debt is debt. I don't care what you think you have in the bank. Do you want true accountability and that word that all politicians use, transparency? That's an action word to me. Transparency is an action word. You have to show that you're accountable. Do you want selective city management? Or do you want true experience in handling taxpayer dollars? And I have that. And years of experience that will include you, the people of Homewood, and every decision that's made.
And that's our time, Ms. Lighter.
Okay. Thank you all.
And one minute, Ms. Andrews, for you to conclude with your closing statement.
Thank you all. The facts don't lie. Homewood's quality of life is second to none. I'm a Homewood mom, a longtime community leader and a city counselor. I know where we've been, I know where we need to go and how to get there. I've worked hard for you and our amazing city for the last nine years, and I am ready to keep doing that as mayor. I will be ready on day one. I'm asking for your vote on August 26th, and I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you very much to both of our candidates. Thank you for that time. If our candidates for Ward One, Ms. McIntyre, Mr. Simmons, if they would like to take the stage, we'll begin questions for Ward One in a second. Would you give one more round of applause to both of our mayoral candidates? All right, so here's our vote for our wards. We'll spend 10 minutes in each ward, except for Ward Three, which y'all should cut. No, because you know, we have four candidates, and they're going to start changing you otherwise. Asking for the Ward candidates, they disagree there. So for Wards One, Two, and Four, we'll spend 10 minutes with our candidates, we're in short, and abbreviate their answers and try and get through some more topics if we can. So they'll each have a minute for an opening statement, one minute to respond to each of your questions, and then a 30-second close. That includes Ms. McIntyre will go first for the opening statement, and Ward One, go ahead.
Good evening, Homewood. I'm Tiffany McIntyre. Thank you so much for coming this evening and wanting to be involved in this process. I have been involved in many leadership roles within our schools in Homewood. I didn't just show up, but I led. I want you guys to know that there are three things that you need to know about me, and I truly am set apart and will be an effective leader for you. My leadership. I have a proven track record of showing up for our schools and for our city. I have not just held a seat on a board, I have led these organizations. It's not about simply serving to me, it is about making a difference and being able to show those results. I am a mom, and right now, I am the only mother of a current Homewood student that is running for city council, and I will advocate for our children. This race is not about the big things, but about the little things that make our city run every day, and I am up for the challenge and will communicate and effectively represent Ward One.
Thank you very much. I can tell you that's our opening statement for you. Mr. Simmons, I'm ready.
All right, folks. Good evening, and thank you for being out here tonight. My name is Paul Simmons, and I'm running to represent Ward One on Homewood City Council. I'm a proud husband, father of two daughters, and our public school, and a longtime neighbor who, like you, love our community. I've spent a great deal of time knocking on doors across West Homewood, listening to your stories, your hopes, your concerns, and what I've heard over and over is that people want a city councilor that listens, responds, and lead with common sense. I'm running because I believe we need thoughtful leadership that puts neighbors first, that support responsible growth, which protecting what makes Homewood special. I believe in transparency. Yes, I'm going to use that word, transparency. Collaboration, and keeping residents at the center of every decision.
And that's what I would do, Ms. Simmons. Thank you, sir.
Sure thing.
Ms. McIntyre, we'll let you answer the first question first. Let's try and rotate, just like you do to the mayoral candidates. Again, actually, hold up that red sign in 10 seconds, that says seven minutes goes by super fast. The question we got most often in your ward in Ward One was about redevelopment and a couple of ISOs, people have been mentioned, the redevelopment that happened at the Econo Lodge property, but there are others in your area that still would need some TLC at this time. What would you do on the new council to try and generate momentum for those properties? And there's a minute.
First of all, I am super excited about what happened with the Econo Lodge that was so needed and made our area so much safer, especially because it's right there near our schools. There is still a lot more work to do with several properties that are over there. That is a big priority for me because I know that it needs to bring more development to our area, some other businesses can come in, take over those spaces that are unused, and it also continues to make our neighborhoods safe for our community members and for our kids as they go to our parks, restaurants, and to and from school.
Ms. McIntyre, thank you. Mr. Simmons, a minute to you, sir. Same question about redevelopment of some of your properties.
Thank you. So I'm a proactive leader. I've actually had meetings with some of the folks that have actually invested in West Homewood, those owners who've invested in West Homewood, and I've actually proposed an opportunities to start really what I would consider West Homewood Merchant Coalition that could create a voice for those business owners. And in turn, those guys and ladies that are investing in West Homewood would then tell us, "Hey, this is what we need. This is our pain points. This is how we make our neighborhood better." And I say, "Our neighborhood." I lead by listening. I don't lead by just doing. And I think it's important that we have to listen to those that are investing in our neighborhoods and our neighbors.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. You can stay there. We do have the honor to go first on this next question. I want to go back to a question we asked the mayoral candidates about accountability and spending, given certainly the attention that the credit card issue, that the investment issue had. What would you do on the council to try and make sure that we are as transparent as possible and protective as possible of the taxpayer dollars?
Communication, 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 communication. I think it's, you have to be transparent in all things. I think there's a way, and I was, I've supported the city manager, and I think that was the best move that the current city manager could have done. There has to be oversight. I don't know what municipality can operate without a city manager, and I think the city of Homewood made the right decision. At this point, let's put things in place where we can monitor and keep people accountable for what they're doing. Too many silos. But if you've got one person or one department that's governing and to keeping watch over all of these things, then we can manage our money better.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
In any business and in any organization, there has to be oversight, and I think if you put just a few people in charge of certain things, you don't have enough oversight, enough transparency, that's when things break down, that's when things begin to fail. So I think as long as you have enough people that are actually paying attention, doing the work, and know what to look at in the process, then those things won't happen. At the end of the day, what has happened has happened, and Homewood just needs to move forward and move forward in a productive way.
All right, Ms. McIntyre, you can stay there for our next question. Let me touch on schools again because it is something that touches all of the wards. You have all candidates obviously in your ward. What would you do as a city councilor? What would you be looking for if you were interviewing school board candidates in the next four years? And what would you do as a council to actively support the school system?
Schools are 100% my passion. I have been the PTO president at the high school. I have served for five years each on Homewood City Schools Foundation and Homewood Athletic Foundation, of which I was the president a few years ago as well. When it comes to school board members, I look for whoever is going to be the right person for the job. I can't answer that question right now, what I'm going to be looking for, because I don't know who's going to present themselves. But it is all about the right person at the right time and what is going to benefit our schools and our children the most. But at the end of the day, schools are my absolute number-one priority.
All right, Ms. McIntyre, thank you. Mr. Simmons, the same question to you, sir. What would you look for in a school board member? How would you actively support the school system, both in your ward and in Rosetta City?
Just like my opponent here, I've served currently on the Homewood City School Foundation, which I think plays a vital role in maintaining and retaining our teachers. I think that's very important. My wife and I moved here to Homewood just for the school systems. However, I can answer the question concerning what am I looking for, is inclusiveness. I think it's very important that we build this bridge large enough that everyone can walk across, and I think it's vital for this eclectic neighborhood that we live in called Homewood, that we call home, that you have everyone included and have a voice. As simple as that.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. All right, one more question. Mr. Simmons, do you want to start with this one?
Yeah, sure.
And then we'll go to this closing statements after that, and you'll be first for that as well.
Okay.
I want to talk about public safety. It's an issue that has come up in your ward several times in some of the comments we've got. Just in general, what would you be looking for as a council to try and enhance public safety in your ward specifically? And how would you support local police? Would you support a change in protocol policy? Anything you're going to touch on regarding public safety in your ward?
Listen, I don't claim to know all the answers, but I do know what I hear. And I mentioned earlier this time before, as I was knocking on the doors, one of the biggest issues is safety. I live in Huntington Park. Dilpris right there, I mean, it seems like there's some steep demons that go through that area, and it concerns me. We've got now sidewalks, and I applaud the city and their leadership for putting those sidewalks there. However, we're going to have to do something about that area right there and the safety for our children and even the individuals that walk in that area as well. Again, I don't have the answer to all that, but I do know this. I've built my career on relationships, so I know how to bring the right people to the table to get things done.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. Ms. McIntyre, the same question to you. A minute on public safety in your ward.
So public safety has been a big question that I have gotten as I've been out speaking with people. I did take the time to go meet with Chief Ross and Chief Broadhead to discuss what can we do to help you guys, to help our city. So I think supporting our police department, our fire department, that is number one, because at the end of the day, they're the ones out on the street supporting our children and supporting our community. There are some issues still within our parks, within our, just on our streets every day that pose public safety risks. So for me, working with the people that are going to be implementing those laws, that is who you need to be working with.
All right, Ms. McIntyre, thank you. Mr. Simmons, if you will, come up. Thirty seconds, and it goes fast.
Oh, wow.
Okay, listen. One TV commercial, right? So.
All right, you ready? Ready? Go. All right, listen, listen, I'm not a politician. I'm a neighbor. And at the end of the day, Ward One is my home, and it's where my kids go to school. We're all neighbors, we're all friends, we wave at each other at the porches, and look, I'm running because I believe the city deserves a leader that listens, and I plan on listening. That's how I lead. And at the end of the day, we're going to watch the budget, we're going to make sure that we're making good decisions, smart growth, growth with purpose, sustainability. But at the end of the day, on election day, I'll be honored to have your vote, and keep working to make Ward One a destination. Thank you.
He's not exactly prepared, he's going 37. I'll give you 37.
Homewood needs strong leadership right now, and I have proven that I have what it takes over and over. Being from West Homewood, I am actually uniquely prepared for this position because I know where West Homewood has come from and where it's going. At the end of the day, I just want this to be a place for our children to want to come back, just as we have all done, and enjoy a wonderful area of Homewood.
Ms. McIntyre, thank you. Let's take our candidates in Ward Two. Ward Two, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Thomas, you can join us on stage if you will. Just a reminder, same format, it'll be admitted for the opening statements, it'll be admitted to respond to our questions, 30 seconds as they close. We're trying to spend about 10 minutes in each ward. We did 12 that last one, so we'll stay pretty close to that. Just alphabetically, Mr. Simmons, you'll have the honor for the first opening statement served.
Thank you, Mr. Orson. Well, it's been a pleasure serving our city this past five years in my first term. I ran in 2020 because I have a master's in public administration and wanted to take my knowledge and experience and apply it in service to our city. One of the things I was most passionate about when I first ran was progressing with the city manager role, and from that effect, I engaged with residents to educate them on the council manager form of government and talk about the value of it. We needed help with communication, we needed help with accountability to our taxpayer dollars. We needed help with interdepartmental coordination and missing functions at City Hall. That's, those are all symptoms of lack of full-time administration, and we achieved that. And we achieved that this term because of the public referendum last September. So that was a campaign promise delivered. And I look forward to continuing to work with the city now that we're addressing immediate needs to go through a visioning process in my reelection. We have a 2007 comprehensive plan that needs to be revised, and we can come together collectively and shape the vision of our city.
And that's admitted. Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas, another minute to you.
Listen, I'm not running against anyone. I'm running for three main reasons. I'm running to maintain our strong schools, to ensure we have safe neighborhoods, and for a more sensible city government. When we last voted in 2020, I didn't realize the importance that local elections in our government have on our daily lives. I now do, and I recognize the incredible influence that our government has on our families, including my wife and daughter. So I'm running simply to give Ward Two voters a choice. Who do they trust with decisions that affect their family's safety? Who do they trust to ensure our police and fire are fully funded to protect our families? Who do they trust to best increase revenues to pay for shortfalls in our schools, infrastructure, and public safety? And who do they trust to oversee our city's finances? Do voters want someone with a proven business, legal, and financial background? Do they want someone who has built businesses, big and small, and navigated complex problems? And do they want someone who has invested locally, voted with their time and their money? If that is what Ward Two voters want, I'm the best choice.
And that's our time, Mr. Thomas. Thank you. Mr. Simmons, our first question to you to get your honor granted to respond to each. Multiple people who responded to our request for questions cited concerns with homelessness, encampments, and Ward Two specifically, and the potential public safety concern they could pose. We also heard from folks who were concerned with how the city might move or rehouse individuals who perhaps are hardworking and in a humane way. So what specific action would you advocate in Ward Two to realistically perhaps solve what many people have come to see as a significant public safety issue?
Thank you. Well, I think I'll just lead off by saying homelessness is a complex problem. So I can't solve homelessness. I wish I could, okay? I can tell you that it's going to be an answer on a case-by-case basis. We've got to go out, when, when there's a public safety concern because of there's an unidentified individual, and we'll send our police up, and we'll talk to the individual. We'll make sure there's not a public safety concern. After that's identified, then we can work with that individual to connect them to services. And, and things like the recent example, where there's been encampments, and people will call, police will go out, check IDs, and then connect to services and offer transportation to shelters. I'm also talking about opioid settlement dollars, which can be used for individuals who have maybe mental health or substance abuse issues. But I mean, we're talking about people who are veterans, families who run house. It's a case-by-case basis. And I will continue to fund our police and fire so that they will have the resources they need for, you know, all of our city to be appropriately served.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. Mr. Thomas, again, that's him.
Well, then, first and foremost, we have to admit, it is a problem. And honestly, I, I know it is a problem, and I don't think councillor Sims understands it is. So 80% of homeless either have a substance abuse or a mental health issue. Many have both. These homeless just today were right next to Halkin Elementary School. Last week, they were right on my street. The week before that, there was an encampment on 65 in Ward Two. Before that, they were on a property line of Ward Two in the city of Birmingham. This is a problem. It's not a new problem. It's been ongoing for three to five years. And one main difference between us is that I recognize it's a problem, and I want to do something about it. And I've been hearing from Ward Two when I've talked to them. So despite it being a problem, there have been no preventive actions, no laws passed to protect our community. I will do that on day one. There's common sense solutions that can protect our community, but show homeless value, homeless values and compassion. I think all of Ward Two wants safe streets. They want safe schools. And I will ensure and propose laws that keep our community and children safe, but that also reflect our values.
Mr. Thomas, thank you, sir. You can stay there, Mr. Card. But next question first. Can we go back to the accountability? If you want to fold in the new form of government that we're going to have, there will be fewer decision makers on this council than there were before, but there will also be a new form of government. How would you make sure that the voters in Ward Two's tax dollars are responsibly spent?
Yeah, I think the first thing that we need to do is recognize our city was $70 million in revenue and almost 300 employees. We do need a full-time executive. We have that now. But with fewer council members, it's more important than ever that we vote in those who are best prepared to run our government. Our city council still has oversight, even though we have a full-time city manager. And we need city council that's experienced in finance. We need city council that has experience in law. We need city council that has a business background. We need a city council that can go in day one of our new government. So again, guys, we have less city council. It's a new government. It's an entirely new operation. And we need someone who's well-rounded and can meaningfully represent the city. So again, fewer members, we each have 20% of a vote. It's important who we vote in and make sure that we have a relevant experience to run the city.
Mr. Thomas, thank you. Mr. Simmons, the same question to you.
As I said in the opening, I have a master's in public administration because when you run local governance, it takes more than just the business approach. Yes, financial matters are important. But we also have to take into consideration the complexity of community resident needs and also environmental sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas. So working together with the new, in the new form of government, we will have a city administrator who will be accountable to our finances, working with our council, which will free up council then to also work with residents to shape the vision of our city, focus on policy, focus on communication and more engagement with residents. Things I've done throughout this term and will continue to do, but will be able to do it more effectively with the new form of government.
All right, Mr. Simmons, you can stay there for our next question. I want to talk about development. Again, that's an issue so many of our voters have told us that they care about. Specifically, if you want to touch on the Creekside District project or growing it around Sanford, it will be an issue in the next four years. And perhaps your approach to development in one minute to be served.
I think for development, you know, I mentioned this before, as a city, we haven't updated our master plan since 2007. We should be updating that every five to 10 years, okay? We're way past that. Next year, 2026, is Homewood's centennial celebration. It's a great time to celebrate our past, but also look ahead to the future. We need a new master plan and to develop that in conjunction with residents. We need to have something proactive. So when development from Sanford or, or Brookwood comes forward, we can then point to what residents want versus reactively trying to deny a proposal. Whether it's communicated or not, we already have our residents have on, on paper what, what we want. And we can point to that and deny it based on that or approve it based on a proactive plan.
Mr. Simmons, thank you. Mr. Thomas. Same question. That's developed to you, sir.
All right. Speaking about Sanford and Creekside, Sanford is a great asset to our city. We're a college town. We should not start with no. We should try to figure out how to get to yes. I had a meeting with Sanford's leadership. I think they're very important to our city. And if they do come back, I think there's a different approach with a different council. Well, we can protect our community, but also let one of our universities grow. And it's very important that we have new development because of new, new tax revenue. So my development philosophy is this. Homewood's a prime location as proximity to downtown Birmingham and these two-year jobs and the higher quality of life means we're going to be a magnet for future growth. We can't stop growth. So if we know we're going to have it, we need to manage it wisely, ensure we have a council that can navigate the complex challenges that it'll bring. It's a good problem to have, but it's still a problem. So because we want Homewood to continue to grow, we're just going to realize that development is not a bad thing. The city with smart growth and sustainable development is important, a development that can work for the city and work for the developers. And I just want the city council to allow the growth while balancing a quality, quality of life, excuse me, concern for us.
That's our time. You'll stay there with the council. We've reached the end of our time for this ward, so you make your first, the closing statement first. Thirty seconds. Can you go for a closing statement?
Ward Two, both of us have experience, but what matters is relevant experience. And with councillor Sims, the last five years, our experience was fraud, undocumented credit card charges, audits that found lack of control, ineffective oversight, Central Avenue bike lane project that had good intentions, horrible execution, wasted government time and money on projects that were later reversed, repeated issues of homelessness and crime, C-plus crime rating. Over those five years, I managed a multinational company, started SLICE, built and run the edge, and invested my time and money in over 10 local Homewood organizations.
And that's our time, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, sir. Mr. Simmons, please.
Very interesting that Mr. Thomas blames me for the financial issues here in Homewood. I came in, asked questions. I did the work. He in turn has also spent $2,500 of his own money for a mayoral candidate who has been on council that entire timeframe. So I know you're not blaming me for those issues when you're reporting the images. Look, I'm not running to be a businessman and run our city like a business. I'm running to be a statesman. I'm running to be, to play to your ideals and not your fears.
And that's our time, Mr. Simmons. All right, you have your point. Ward Three, come on up. It's going to be a marathon, 20-minute session of our board candidates. So for Mr. Cobb, Mr. Cobb will go first. People are going to take the podiums. We have just three chairs left for you. Round robin here. Mr. Cobb, you will go first. And again, whoever is coming up, you'll just swap seats. We'll make it over. Same, we'll do 20 minutes with this ward, and the timing for each candidate will be the same. One minute for your opening statements, one minute to respond for each of you. We're going out in a better order to begin. I promise I will try to give everybody a chance to be the first to answer a question. If not, it's not decided. You might never come on the panel. Hi, Mr. Cobb. I'm Ben. Your opening statement, sir.
Okay, I'm Greg Cobb. I moved into Homewood. I married into Homewood in 1991 and came to work here at Homewood in 1998. Finished a career here 22 years, and I loved it. Best job I ever had. And it's, it was kind of a crazy job, but I was on call 24/7. So there's nothing for the mayor to call you. I was Friday night. It was raining and things were flooding. But I loved the job, and I hated to leave when I left, but I had to. So I want to stay involved. This is my home from now on. My house is not for sale. There's been a lot of people on the buy lately, but it's not for sale. I want to stay right here until I go out toes up. And I want to stay involved. If I make the council, great. That's what I want. And if I don't make the council, you're still going to see me down here at the, at the meetings and be involved in what I know. My thing here is standing in the zone.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. That's our time. Mr. Lane, open your first statement.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not a public speaker. Let's go on record. Anyway, what I am, I dig into details. I work with people to understand what they want and need in joining all solutions and on their strengths. When you run a business like I have for almost 25 years now, you get a deep understanding of what makes it run. When to make financial investments, when to pay down debt, and how to give your customers what they're asking for. There are many similarities in how the city is run. I realize in this new form of government, I won't be running the day-to-day operations. That's someone else's job. But making policy is the job of the council, and that's something I know how to do, and I'm good at it. I don't think Ward Three is looking for a public speaker or even a new face. I think they're looking for someone who will roll up their sleeves, listen to our citizens, small businesses, dig into the finances of the city, and provide strong oversight, restore trust, and help guide Homewood into the future.
And, and that's our time, Mr. Lane. Thank you, sir.
Hi there. I'm John Manzelli, and for 20 years, I've been in leadership positions in education or in executive leadership in nonprofits. I've managed budgets. I've set strategic agendas. I afford the public-private partnerships, and I've worked with organizations to take them into growth and into the future. Mr. Lane is right. What the city wants are people who understand where we need to go. They're going to roll up their shirt sleeves and get to work. I've knocked on 900 doors in this ward, answering, listening, trying to be there to hear what people want. I believe in leadership. I understand what it means to serve. I've been serving my entire life. My wife and I are celebrating our 19th birthday, anniversary. If we get through this, we hit this election, we'll get to 19, I think. I have two children, one in high school and one in middle school. This is my home. I haven't spent 20 years here. I haven't had that honor. But this is my home, and I will respect the people of Homewood, no matter what neighborhood you live in, no matter what race, ethnicity, identity, or socioeconomic status. I will listen. Thank you.
We'll speak on a minute for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Homewood. My name is Keith Young, and I am running for Homewood City Council, Ward Three. I have spent my career in both the public and private sectors. I have ran, or I have spent time in the state government. I have coordinated the operations of a major law firm, and now I'm a small business owner. My campaign is very simple. It's about three things: protecting what makes Homewood special, preparing for the future, and making decisions that respect our constituents. I look forward to answering questions, talking more dialogue, because when we do have a big conversation, I think it's the only time we can come up with real solutions or results that actually work.
Mr. Young, thank you. Mr. Cobb, a few questions for you. And you have the honor of answering this first question for Ward Three. One of the things we heard from some of the voters in your ward was the question about Rosedale, specifically how you have aimed to both preserve its historic nature and perhaps enhance its future in the next four years. Your vision for Rosedale, admitted to you, sir.
Well, I haven't enhanced Rosedale for much longer. I found out about a grant for sidewalks in Rosedale. I applied for the grant and was turned down because our income levels are too high. So I talked to Dr. Fredrickson, the chair of the county, and agreed to get him to spread out the board. The board grid is huge. It's not by wards, it's by census tracts. Excuse me. The census tract for that area is huge. It goes all the way from Redneck Expressway, past Dawson Church, about two blocks south of Oxford. And I told him that the income levels are not comparable, and it's not fair to hold it against Rosedale because the income levels down there at Dawson Church are much higher. And so he sent a man over here, and we walked the streets, knocked it into Rosedale and got the tracks.
I'd like to scroll for Howard, so I'll quit right there. Mr. Cobb, thank you, sir. Mr. Lane, the same question to you. Your, your vision of both preserving Rosedale and enhancing its future, sir.
Well, Rosedale, I've been going to Rosedale since 1971. Spent a lot of time in Rosedale. And that's a community that's special to my heart. It's because they demanded things from the city that they never paid attention to. Okay, the city now needs to budget finances to Rosedale. For some reason, we haven't done any of that. Mr. Cobb is absolutely correct about the sidewalks and things that they put in usually during election time. Okay, that was all done by the county, but not the city. Rosedale has to have the residents come together and get a comprehensive plan, what we really want to do with Rosedale. Because it's a beautiful location. There's a lot of things that can happen, whether it's going to be multifamily in there, whether it's going to be residential, whether it's going to be commercial. But it's up to the city to get with the residents, have a committee, to get together and collaborate that with the residents.
That's our minute. Thank you, sir. And now, Mr. Manzelli, please.
So there was a forum in Rosedale on Sunday, so I'll tell you what I thought of it. It is a moral obligation for the city of Homewood to put resources into Rosedale. The citizens of Rosedale in that forum said that they did not feel like they were treated with the same respect and dignity of the rest of the citizens of Homewood, which is insane because Rosedale is one of the three cities that were brought together to form Homewood. To talk about Rosedale like it's a different place is absolutely crazy. They're citizens of Homewood. What I said there was, we need to look at a historical preservation plan, if that is what the citizens of Rosedale want. We need to commit to that, if that's what they want. And we must allocate dollars. That's all that matters when you're talking about where your priorities are, where you allocate dollars. We must allocate dollars to infrastructure in Rosedale. We must make it a livable community again, and that, that's fine, sir.
Mr. Manzelli, your name is Rosedale.
Rosedale is unique. It is special, and we are lucky to have it here in Homewood. But I think the only thing that can save Rosedale is citizen input and a city council. But I think the only thing that could save Rosedale is citizen input and a city councilor who knows what we have with Rosedale. It's very special. We need to keep it. I'm always open to discussion about expanding the Neighborhood Preservation District. But we need to keep it, we need to protect it, and allocate the correct resources that way. What I've seen during this campaign is our districts aren't being treated fairly. While we were during our forum over in Rosedale, I couldn't help but look up above me, and on the ceiling there was plaster and paint falling and things like that. I don't think you would see that over at the new swimming pool complex and everything else. So I think we, Rosedale has been kind of left behind. It's time to appreciate what we have here, and I've told Rosedale Sunday, I won't forget it, and I mean that now.
Mr. Young, thank you, sir. Phil Stacey will allow you a second. Phil Stacey, you'll have to answer this next question first. If you could talk about the accountability issue again, that's something that was raised. I want to give each of you a chance to weigh in on. How would you as a city councilor down one of just five votes in that council meeting forum make sure that every tax dollar is being managed and spent wisely?
Accountability. Communication, 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 like Paul has said. We have to communicate with the citizens. The citizens have to know what we are doing. But at the end of the day, you are electing a city councilor that you believe in. So it's going to be our job to represent you.
Mr. Young, thank you. Mr. Manzelli, we'll let you go next, please, sir.
Would you ask a question again, okay?
Sure. How would you make sure every dollar is spent wisely and accountably to the taxpayer?
Okay. So, short answer, having a city manager changes everything, and that was an important step we made. But I do think there are things we can do. I would like to see to go to an open accountability, like an open accounting online software. Hoover has one of these. I don't know if Hoover's necessarily the best one, but that's something we can talk about. But you can go onto Hoover's website right now and see, it's an open checkbook, and you can see what they spent last month on everything. That shines sunshine and light on these kind of areas. Thank you. And that goes further. Hoover's website even has the status of public work projects and where they stand. So you, as a citizen, can look at those kind of things and see, where is this? How's this working? How far away are these promises? And I think that kind of open state, I work for an education system for the state of Alabama. We, our books are open. These things are open. These are not new systems. These are not new ideas. Other cities know how to do them. We just need to find one that works for us.
Mr. Manzelli, thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to give everybody a chance.
One more time for the question again.
Sure. The issue of accountability, how would you make sure tax dollars from your ward across the city are being spent wisely and accountably?
I'm going to go deep, and it's going to take a while to get there. That's the problem.
I get fifty-nine seconds.
Okay. The accountability, as far as budgets are concerned, I'm sorry, I'm just lost in this question.
How do you make sure that the city?
No, I know where the question is. I know where the question is, as far as setting up the budgets, like they said, the city manager, we're going to be oversight. And I'm going to bring the ball. This is not, I mean, I can sit down and talk to you about what we can do, but I don't know how to do it right now. I really don't. And I apologize to everybody. As far as, I don't know what to say right now. I really don't. I mean, in five minutes, I will, but right now, I don't.
That's correct. I have a closing statement, sir. If you want to touch back on that, please do. Mr. Cobb, a minute to you, sir, on how to make sure tax dollars are screened wisely and responsibly.
Okay. In the past, the way that was handled, all the bills that came in were given to the city council to review before they were paid. But they can't review what they're not given. So I do not blame the city council for what happened. If they don't see, they can't review it. But they did review things. And I remember going through my budget, and they went through that budget with fine tooth comb, drove me crazy. Because, I mean, they cut my postage budget one year, and I'm going, come on, man, I got to mail that. But I think we need a new method. We've got to start over. I don't think that sending the bills to the councilor or G is the right answer. We've got a city manager now who's going to be full-time, where council members are part-time, and a lot of other jobs to do, and they can't go through that well. So I'm going to lean more towards our city manager to keep a handle on it. I think we've got to just change, code and change our file, what we've been doing.
Excellent. Mr. Cobb, thank you. Mr. Lane, do you go back up? I want to give you a chance to answer the next question first. We're trying to do it around a while before that here.
Next question?
Yes, sir. New question to you, sir, Mr. Lane. A minute to talk about your thought, your philosophy on development. If you want to touch on Sanford again, that's been an issue for a lot of time, developing around Sanford. Brookwood Village is another issue. Anything about development in your ward and how you would handle that as a city councilor?
Okay, first of all, with Sanford University, I spent some time with the president and some of the board. And the biggest problem we have with Sanford right now is that trying to have an equal partnership. Okay, what we did with the Crete deal, we lost, what happened was twenty-six million dollars they wanted for a taxpayer from the city, right off the bat. They killed the deal. Okay? But what we can do for Sanford is to build the relationship, to build a relationship with them. Their partnership we have, this is not working out very good for me tonight, boys and girls and ladies and gentlemen. Because with Sanford, it's a disaster.
It's a disaster. That's our time. If you can come back to me close to take it as well if you want. That's our minute. Mr. Manzelli, if you'd like to go to you next, sir. Your question about development, both Sanford, Brookwood Village, what's your philosophy in here?
Sure. This might come as a surprise to anyone, but I'm not against Sanford University. I know I had a very big public fight against the Creekside Development. I worked for twelve years in a mission-driven university. I believe in universities, and I know Sanford is an incredibly valuable asset. I was against the proposal, the way it stood. I hope we can work with Sanford on an even proposal, one that works for the citizens as well as Sanford, and I expect we can. I am not against development at all. Development is necessary, and growth is necessary. Brookwood Village, we have to find a solution. I know it's not easy, as Sandra's stated. It's a complicated puzzle, but it can't be as on the apocalypse movie set for the rest of our lives. We have to give it a try. What we can do, though, is communicate. We can come up with a plan. We can meet with Mountain Brook. We can meet with developers. We can figure out what our best options are. Then we come back to the citizens and say, this is the best we can do. Is that good enough, or do we wait? And that's how we can be responsive on something like that.
That's our time. And Mr. Young, do you have a question on development?
Whatever development happens in Homewood, I think it has to complement Homewood's character. Sanford, Sanford students generate over six million in tax revenue each year. We have to work with them. They have to be our partner, and we have to let them grow responsibly. The city has guardrails. We have guardrails that get them to grow responsibly, but we have to partner, and we have to work with them. Again, development, any kind of development that happens in the city of Homewood, it has to complement it and not overwhelm it. That's what I want, is something that complements our city and makes it charming, and hopefully we'll get that done.
Hi, Mr. Young. Phil Stacey, we'll begin our closing statements, and we'll go in reverse order from where we did opening. So you'll go first, followed by Mr. Manzelli, Mr. Lane, and Mr. Cobb. These are thirty seconds each, sir, so thirty seconds to you.
My campaign, again, as I said in my opening statement, about three themes: protecting what makes us special, planning for the future, and making decisions that represent the interest of Ward Three citizens. My whole campaign, in a nutshell, is about good government. I deserve good government. You guys deserve good government, and I need your help to get there. So Tuesday, vote Young, vote Keith Young.
Mr. Young, thank you. Mr. Manzelli, the same thirty seconds.
I'm sure you're going to leave for Tuesday with us. So, closing statement. I have spent a lot of time walking around this ward trying to meet people because I believe the job is communication. I, I am offering my services to the people of Homewood and my skill set to the people of Ward Three. If you wanted, I have ten seconds already, sir. I would be proud to have that opportunity. I have a lot of positions at manzelliforhomewood.com. I've been, I'm an idea person. I'm an intellectual. I have five pages worth of ideas sitting on there. I hope you'll take a minute. I hope I can earn your trust. I'd love to discuss this more with you anytime. That's our time.
Well, I'm fortunate to be at the point of my life right now where I can devote the time and energy to be a council position deserves. While I still have a responsibility in my company, I have the flexibility to fully commit and serve as your councilor. I'll work closely with fellow council members and the community to plan, solve problems, shape policy. I love Homewood and its people. I've been here seventy-one years. Well, not seventy-one. Excuse me. Fifty-five years? Yeah, fifty-five is better. I love Homewood and its people, no matter what the backgrounds are or belief. My goal is simple, to help this create a city where everyone has the opportunity to thrive by listening, learning, and working together. And I do apologize, thanks for that.
And Mr. Cobb, final few, sir.
Repeat, question, please.
Your closing statement. Thirty seconds.
Sorry, I get a little confused.
It's quite all right.
All right. I left Homewood working here when I didn't want to, because I really loved the job and the people. I've met so many people in Homewood. And I know a lot about it, and I want to offer my services back to it because I know Homewood like the back of my hand. I don't think you can find a place in Homewood I haven't been. I work on infrastructure, the end department is engineering, planning, zoning, infrastructure, repair, planning and zoning, and zoning is one of our biggest concerns. And I think everybody's question about development shines a light, that that's what it's all about.
That's our time, Mr. Cobb. Thank you. Would you think all of the words? If you were Ward Four, Ward Four, Winslow Armstead existed willing to put this on stage, thank you, Camp Ward Three, that was a marathon you guys faced through your career. After one more, we'll be done, so I've got to take this lecture. Just a reminder again, one minute opening statements, one minute responses, thirty seconds closing statements. Mr. Armstead will have the honor of apologetic, to give you what he said in the first.
Okay. Thank you guys for being here tonight. My name is Winslow Armstead. My family and I moved to Homewood in twenty sixteen. We've been walking around knocking on doors for weeks now, and the number one question I get is, why are you running the city council? And I think most people think, well, we must not have Facebook, because... I look at this and the downsizing of the city council, the reduction of the number of wards. I have twenty-five years of business experience, ten years of finance, finance experience. And I looked through this particular campaign, and this campaign is a job interview. And we've locked over eight hundred and fifty doors. We've gone around, we've listened, we've made sure that we are engaging neighbors, and want to show that the work ethic that we've shown during this campaign is a work ethic that you can expect out of me as a city councilor. Thank you for your time tonight. Look forward to answering your questions.
Ms. Williams.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Williams, and I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Homewood and of Ward Four. I've raised my three sons here, all of which went from Chase Cohaba all the way through Homewood High School. I've served in many opportunities along the way, and I've been everything from PTO to Athletic Foundation, from booster clubs to local nonprofits. It's been an honor every time, every step of the way to serve in all those capacities. As I, as I reach out to people and I listen to voters along the way in these past few weeks, I hear that people want a city and citizen-led government. And with that, with a citizen-led government, we'll be able to support our small businesses, we'll be able to grow with intention and purpose, and we'll also be able to preserve our special neighborhoods. It's imperative that we lay a strong foundation for this new city government as we move forward. We must ensure this transition includes solid oversight and true transparency. Thanks so much for listening to us tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Armstead, the first question many voters in Ward Four all asked us about was Brookwood Village specifically. We've touched on it several times tonight. I'd like to give you a minute for your specific ideas as to how to reinvigorate the development there.
Actually, it was across the street from Brookwood Village, so it is not only near and dear, I guess, to many of our hearts, it's actually near and dear to me proximity-wise. The Brookwood Village property with the new Andrew Sports Medicine Clinic does provide an anchor for us to now start looking at what resident feedback, resident input would mean to the rest of the two-thirds of the property as we try to get together as a community and give some input into what Fairway might do with that property. I believe as a community, we have an opportunity, and the city councilor has an opportunity, to form committees and talk through what our citizens want for that property and try to drive a use that would be also useful for our community and also a tax-driven, tax-driven project for us. We all have sort of a memory of the property if you've been in Homewood for any time or in our camp for any time. And people have these memories of being able to go there with their families and use it, and though it won't be an interior mall, I do believe that what I've heard at the doors is that people want to restore the opportunity to go there, spend time with their families, and utilize the property along with the use that the developers want to have with it.
And that's our time, Mr. Armstead. Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams. One minute to you, ma'am, on Brookwood Village.
Yes, like Winslow, Brookwood is in my backyard. I remember when Brookwood got their first Chick-fil-A in the entire state of Alabama. So it's been there, it's been a part of our lives. Unfortunately, Brookwood is not a problem for just Homewood. Malls across America are lying dormant, and we all know what that is a product of. So what the problem is, is not so much for us to solve it. The problem is for us to make sure we're listening to developers that bring ideas, the new ideas. It's not necessarily for our city council to decide from top down what that use is going to be and what Brookwood is going to look like in the future. Like Jennifer said earlier, Andrew Sports Medicine is a world-renowned state-of-the-art practice. We're going to be, all eyes in the world are going to be on Homewood, Alabama. And I look forward to being a part of the conversations with developers, with Fairway, and all the such, so that we can make sure that we have something that we're proud of, that we want to look at across the street, and that we'll be able to invest our time and our families' energy in.
Ms. Williams, thank you. Phil Stacey. We'll let you go first with this question. One minute to you on the issue of public safety. You're concerned in your particular ward and how you might address them.
So I know we already spoke earlier about scooters and public safety as far as that goes. I have actually had the experience of being able to talk with Chief Ross a few weeks ago, and we had a very, very productive meeting regarding what they need from the police department, what they're looking for. We actually talked about the need to increase the salaries and be able for Chief Ross to go and recruit quality individuals to maximize what we've got as far as our police force. So as far as those type things, I like to leave things up to the experts. I'm not an expert in everything, but I like to leave public safety up to the people that actually serve. And that would be the people that are in our fire department, our police department. And my support would be to throw dollars behind what the police chief needs and what he would need to be able to ensure the safety in our streets, ensure our schools, ensure that everything that we need as far as citizens go would be able to be supported by our police and our firefighters.
Ms. Williams, thank you. Mr. Armstead.
I believe public safety, especially in Ward Four, is kind of a balance, right, between empathy and enforcement, right? We talk about the scooters and, you know, years back, right, about ten years ago, we said, why can't kids get out of the house and go back outside? Why isn't it kids playing video games? And so we have kids outside now, and we need to help them learn safe methods to be outside. We need to learn, teach, or at least help enforce our streets as far as safety, as far as walkability, making sure we have enough patrols so that kids feel safe, that parents feel comfortable that children may outside. We also have sort of in Homewood, this, this traffic enforcement when it comes to sort of Lake Shore as it were for Ward Four. And are we able to enforce traffic so that the? And are we able to enforce traffic so that the walkability can remain, especially if Brookwood is reestablished in the way that we would like for it to be, so that we can cross Lake Shore and not feel a safety concern there?
Mr. Armstead, thank you. You can stay, and we'll give you the honor of answering the next question. Want to just talk on, touch on the topic of schools specifically in your ward, how you go about supporting them, if you see needs to legally be addressed, and how you would do that?
Yeah, so my, my children went to Chase Cohaba, through the middle school and high school. And, you know, we were just talking about this today, Jenna back there is talking about the ability to walk your kids to school and the opportunity in Homewood, right, to allow your kids to walk home or feel safe doing so. In support of that is to make sure that we have the resources set aside so that the kids can feel safe and we can provide the right enforcement to allow that. Also, do we have the right allocation set aside for the maintenance of the schools? And then most importantly, are we putting the resources aside to make sure that every single student has the resources that they need to maximize their potential? I believe that, that for school board parties, but also believe that in support of our teachers and in support of the resources that we can put through programs to make sure that our kids have what they need, not just some kids, but all kids have what they need.
And then to you, Ms. Williams, on schools.
So yes, I agree with Winslow on the fact that we definitely need to have a walkable school area, and that is a challenge, especially in the Hollywood area with all of the hills and we have a lot of line intersections and so forth. I've actually spoken with several people across the street, across 31 on the Salter end, and they specifically requested that one side of Salter be accessible with sidewalks so that the kids from Windsor Boulevard and down along Salter will actually have access to reach 31 safely, and then also can walk down and cross just in front of the Kellie Williams and CBS areas or use the tunnel. Another thing that I think is important is that we're able to nominate quality individuals for our school board. Again, I'm not an educator, I don't pretend to be one, but I trust the people that are in the position of making those decisions. And if we put the funds and we support our small businesses and we continue to have that funding to support our education, then we're going to be fine, because I trust the people from superintendent to principals to leaders, all the way down, to be able to make those decisions for us and for our, our school board and our school system community board.
Ms. Williams, thank you. If you want to stay, you'll have the honor of answering your closing statement. So 30 seconds to you, Ms. Williams, for your closing statement.
Listen, I'm not a politician. I'm here to explain to each and every one of you that I believe everyone in this city deserves a voice. I believe everyone has the right to be heard, not just a small and select few. I hope you will come on this journey with me and be able to know that your voice is one that will be heard by me, and I will be able to speak your voice through to the city council. I'd be honored to have your vote. Please vote Kristen Williams on August 26th, and thanks for being here tonight.
Ms. Williams, thank you.
So my dad was, got advice from my granddad when he asked for permission to marry, he said, my granddad says, only so much living, you can do off that love. At some point, it's going to be about hard work. And for me, a vote for Winslow is a vote for 25 years professional experience. A vote for Winslow is five years of civic experience, five on the planning commission and two on the border zoning adjustments. A vote for Winslow is a vote for the hard work we put in and knocking on over 850 doors, and we'll get to 1,000. Vote for Winslow on August 26th if you want four years of work-led, experience-driven work on the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Armstead. Thanks to Dan for hosting us. Vote in two weeks from tonight, and if you want to share this for folks in Ward Here, it's on both our Facebook page and that Homestar page as well. Thank you, have a good night.